All right, welcome. I'm Tim Skagans, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I am calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, June 19th, 2017. First item of business is to check with our board and see if anyone has a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening.
No.
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 Item three is approval of minutes. We have a stat up here. The first one is from May 1st. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 1st as circulated?
So moved.
Seconded by Tony. Seconded by Art. I just wanted to point out that I had, in the copy that is here, I had Dave correct the spelling of Rob Stewart's name and add the RFP to the minutes. So that's included. Any other changes or corrections to the minutes on May 1st? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes from May 1st are approved by a vote of 5-0-0. We have minutes from our meeting on May 15th that were circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Tony?
Seconded.
Seconded by Art. Any additions or corrections to the minutes on May 15th?
That was just the...
That's the, that was a regular meeting.
Oh, that was a regular meeting, yes.
Yeah, the special meeting was the 30th. We'll get to that. All in favor of approving the minutes for May 15th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those minutes are approved by a vote of 5-0-0. We had a special meeting on May 30th to pay bills. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 30th as circulated?
To stay.
Oh, I move.
Motion to approve from Art, seconded by Ken. Any additions or corrections to the minutes on May 30th? All in favor of approving the minutes for May 30th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Staying.
Staying.
Tony. So, the minutes for May 30th are approved by a vote of 4-0-1. And we have minutes from our last meeting on June 5th. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Seconded.
Seconded by Art. Any additions or corrections to the minutes from June 5th? I just would point out that the minute, the resolution for Mr. Finney will be included in the minutes. It's in the book, waiting for the minutes to be approved, so that will be included. All in favor of approving the minutes for June 5th, say aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved, 5-0-0. And that brings us up to date on the minutes. Warrants. I have payroll warrant number 25 in the amount of $18,890.15. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Tony?
Seconded.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor of approving payroll warrant number 25, say aye.
Aye.
Payroll warrant number 25 in the amount of $18,890.15 is approved by a vote of 5-0-0. I also have check warrant number 40 in the amount of $88,701.55. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Tony?
Seconded.
Seconded by Art. Major items on this one are $1,800 to 83 Buck Hill Road LLC.
That's a rental for the back here. It all came at once, several months with.
Okay. $5,700 to Sweet Cross Blue Shield, $1,300 to Benton County Sheriff, $9,800 to Catamount Environmental. That would be for the asbestos, the teardown by the dump. $2,700 to Land and Assessments or Assessor, $4,000 to Michael Slaven.
That was Cemetery Project. We built a road into the back of the Cemetery on East Road.
Okay.
That was in the reserve. We put it in place.
$39,000 to Benning, North Bennington Water Department. It says December through May. That is, would be our normal payment for water, I presume?
Yes.
$39,000. Do you have, does that know what I'm?
Yeah. Yeah, we pay them for, for the water we get from them. $6,600 to Tam, $5,000 to William E. Daley, $4,500 to William E. Daley. Any other discussion on check warrant number 40?
The money we receive for water rent, does that go in the general fund or does it go separately and then you transfer the money to?
Depends on how it's coded. Is it coded at the 265? Is that?
Well, this is, Art's talking about the basic revenue for the water, the bill of money.
Oh, that goes into the reserve account.
Okay, and then you transfer the reserve account into the general fund and pay it?
Yeah, creates a due to, from.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, all the revenues come from the water department. We just transfer it, we just write the checks for them? Is that why this is here?
Well, all checks are written out of the general fund, so it creates an obligation to bring them back into the general fund from the water account.
So it goes into the wa, that's what I was trying to determine. It goes into a special water account fund and then it's transferred to the general fund to pay it.
From a reserve fund to the general?
Well, the water department's an enterprise fund, so it's, their collections are separate. This is just the bill that we pay out of that fund because we don't own any water.
Right. Yeah, the water department has completely separate accounting from the town. Okay. And that's not from our general fund then? Or it is?
It's being, the check is being written out of our general fund. Money to pay it came from the water department collection.
From a reserve fund, transferred to a general fund. Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approval of check warrant number 40, say aye.
Aye.
Check warrant number 40 in the amount of $88,701.55 is approved, 5-0-0. Are there any announcements? I do have one. I got a letter from our fire chief who asked me to read this at tonight's meeting. Dear Selectmen, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for the honor that you bestowed on us during Big Truck Night. We, as a department, don't look for recognition, so when it happens, it is greatly appreciated. Being individually recognized for their years of service was something that most of my firefighters have never experienced. I would also like to thank you for allowing us to use the North Road House for our training over the past couple of months. This was an invaluable experience and allowed us to form tasks that we just can't do in the classroom. I have found one of the best teaching tools is to not only be hands-on, but to make the learning as much fun as possible. Last but not least, I want to thank David Kiernan and his support for what we do and being a big contributor to the smooth running of the fire department. Very respectfully submitted, Joe Vatican, Chief of Shasberry Fire Department. Are there any public comments?
Actually, I, I just wanted to say something about the-
Yes, I'm sorry.
-the Big Truck Night. I was approached by a couple of different people wanting to know why Shasberry's town truck wasn't in the truck night.
Why our?
We, one of our own road trucks weren't there to show off, I guess.
It was a miscommunication.
Okay, yeah.
That's the best way to phrase it.
Okay, 'cause I was approached by someone.
Normally every year, there's, there's one there and there was just a lot going on and it was missed. Yeah, it was meant to be there. It was a mistake.
Right, right, okay. I didn't know just how to quite answer it, other than, "I don't know."
Yeah, there's always one there. There was one picked out and we just didn't.
Okay.
All right, item seven, treasures report. Melanie Dexter, welcome.
Okay, this is one of these mid-month ones that aren't terribly informative, but let's see. What's interesting here, that insurance payment you see down there, what was that again, Dave?
That was a reimbursement for the expenses of fixing the tandem that fell over, for lack of a better term.
Yep, so that was covered. So that's what that $7,300 is. The big story here is that you can see we're starting to, as we could go farther down, we're starting to think about needing to get our line of credit. So I'm going to have that ready for the next meeting, which I think is a special meeting. Is that correct? 29?
Twenty.
The 20-something.
That's one of my calendars.
Anyway, whatever it is, I'm going to have the paperwork ready for the line of credit at that meeting and you'll need to sign off on that. And so what I'm working on now is just getting the cat, the projected cash flow, so that, that's the main thing I need to supply to the bank to be able to, to get that. The, the other thing is I have, I had mentioned at a previous meeting that I needed a new bank account to put tax sale money that's in escrow. I don't want to have it commingled with the reserve funds anymore. So I have the paperwork for a new, a new bank account. You need, you've been through this a lot of times, but you need to go through the resolutions at this meeting. You have to adopt it. And then, Tim, you need to sign the paperwork, so I can, here are the certified resolutions that you need to adopt. I think you don't have to read the whole thing. I think you've been through this a lot of times.
Yeah.
And the last page, I just need Tim to sign it and then I think Marlene needs to notarize your signature.
Yeah, the one I just did had to be notarized, so.
I think it needs to be notarized if it's not done in the presence of a people's representative. So.
It does need to be notarized, so.
So if you want to, if you want to do that tomorrow, or actually, Marlene's down there, she's still going to be around at the end of the meeting, and then just leave it on my desk.
I can take that tonight if you stop in tomorrow, because Marlene won't be gone before we go up here.
Okay, this is a document. It looks a lot like the document we just signed for the trustees to give them access to the bank account. This is, I'm looking for where it gives the name of the bank account.
That's not here. Its name is Tax Sale Escrow, and it's a money market.
Okay, here I have an account number, and if I can see where that account number is connected to that name.
The name is there.
Name is there.
Yep.
Oh, here's the account number.
Right.
Which matches the account number here.
They did the.
Okay, so this is to create Tax Sale Escrow Account, authorizing Melanie Dexter and Joan Vargo to access it with all the usual legalese that's required for accessing a bank account. And without objection, we'll forego the reading of that.
So moved.
We have a motion to accept the resolution for creating a Tax Sale Escrow Bank Account from Art.
Seconded.
Seconded from Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So that motion creating a Tax Sale Escrow Bank Account is approved, 5-0-0, and I will come in tomorrow and sign this in the presence of the notary. Good.
The only other thing I have is I'm going to Newcastleton tomorrow for a workshop, so I'll be gone all day. But one of the sessions is on preventing and identifying fraud, which I think will be interesting. It's led by the, by Sullivan Powers, so there'll be some familiar faces.
Oh, good, okay.
And then there's also a session on tax sales, which I really don't know anything about and I feel like I should. So that's where I will be tomorrow.
Very good.
That's all I got.
Any other questions for Melanie?
Fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I mean, just the special meeting Melanie referred to was going to be the 29th at 3:30. That's to pay bills, because the next scheduled meeting, we talked about it, is July 3rd, Monday. It's unlikely. I know a number of us aren't going to be here. So we'll have a special meeting on the 29th at 3:30. Joan will be here, because I'll be on vacation. Joan will be downstairs with her warrant prepared and take care of that and your paperwork.
And I'll be there to present the other, the paperwork for the line of credit.
Okay. 3:30, special meeting, okay. It's in my Google Calendar. It can actually happen. Okay, item eight is road foreman report. Steve, welcome. Good evening. So, we're just about to get caught up on grading and then we got a hurricane.
Yeah, it's not normal for the period, is it?
Yeah. How, how close did we get to getting caught up on grading?
We were until this last go-around, probably four, five days ago, I think. We started with complete progress until it happened again. Also, we progressed with a few of the decisions that we dug. We actually succeeded and all slowed back and hopefully held up with this last one.
You want to play one?
And then we started with some of our summertime stuff. I think you might have been in the morning about that.
I couldn't hear that. If you ask me something, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
You and I had a meeting in the morning that we were talking about for summer projects.
Yeah, yeah, we were going to have it today, but the weather and trees started coming down. So, yeah, we have a plan for the, for the summer. Includes a number of projects that will be Shasberry Hollow for a second. These are ones we've talked about before, the East Road, about 1,500 feet. We have like 17 culverts that need to be replaced. We definitely want to get them on the schedule for the summer. They will be easier to do on weeks when people are on vacation and we're down to four people. We'll be able to continue doing some grading and putting some culverts. There's a section of West Mountain Road.
And when you're talking about 17 culverts, you're talking about like under driveway culverts?
Like, like culverts, like 20, somewhere like 22 feet across the road. At least the, like two-
Just old steel ones.
Going through the road.
That go through the road, not?
Not the arch culvert like Shasberry Hollow we're talking about.
Right.
It's like, more like a bridge than a culvert. Yeah, but there's 17 of these, so we're kind of backed up on them. It's time to catch up.
Have they plugged or just?
Just old rusty, need to be replaced.
It's just time for them to go. We also have a number of French drains that we talked about for Trumbull Hill, Murphy at Gannon Road, Daniel Road, 200 Danny Road. We also have, can you keep going? Porton Hill down by Berix and Rollin Road. That section needs to be redone. Like to try and do some over on Boupan Hollow, between Boupan and Shasberry Hollow. That stretch of road there gets very pitted out. Of course, we have a transfer station later on. It's not really an issue, because we won't be doing that till October. The big thing that's come up is the tree, the hazard tree survey. We have 45 high priority, high probability of failure trees. I'm going to work out a contract to go to bid. I have a call in to Jim White, who's our warden. This is something that I think we have to fund and get down. This is a certain issue of liability here of these trees. And he's gone around, this is what, Steve, half the town you and he did?
About three quarters of it.
Three quarters, so there'll probably be more in the fall. But there's an opportunity here, as we've had a member of the road crew retire, and to use this, what we were projecting as payroll, to maybe fund this tree removal. Because it's, it's going to be expensive. Forty-five trees taken down is going to cost money. We usually use greater heights when we have one or two that have to come down, and the crew will go and do the groundwork and chop it up. But when you're talking 45, that's just not going to happen with the other work that needs to be done. I'm not even sure it'd be within the scope of the local guys. We might have to go somewhere else. But I think it's a bid item, and I would imagine, I figured a number for it based on prior jobs, but I'll keep that.
What's the average cost of a tree, depending on size?
That's the interesting thing. We've had some come down. The last one we took down, the estimate actually we have for one large tree right now is, is $1,250. So you do that by 45 trees.
Yeah.
And I imagine we'll have some economy of scale by going to someone to bid such a large contract. But you get to a point that you have to do it. You know, I figured I'd start this and have one or two things to highlight. Then the high priority turned into almost everything on every page.
Are these all big trees, or do they range in size?
Some of them are. The problem areas were wires and things. We're hyper with it. Our department can't do it. You just can't reach them to be able to do it. They're just dangerous. Some of them are three feet or at the base. Big old maple trees, for example, on the end of.
If you got trees that are involved in wire, have you contacted Green Mountain Power about maybe having a split?
Well, I just got this. So there's, there's a lot we have to look into with this, but it's something we have to plan on doing. And there's, there's things with the wires and Green Mountain will come around and, like they are doing in a number of towns now, trim things back from the wires and things. But we'd have to see just where, if it could be something, I think what you're hinting at is cooperative with them, like they've taken off a certain amount because it's interfering with their wires, but they won't take it all the way down. I haven't seen them do that anyway. But there's a lot to discuss about this and see how much they will do. And the diameters of these trees go from 36 inches down to eight to 14, but mostly in the 20-plus range. So you're talking decent trees. You know, they're not, they're not little things. A week, they'll knock them down. And, you know, he's, that's why we have to go look at this stuff and let us know. So, but I, I know what you're saying, Ken, and there are wires involved. We need to talk to them. We need to find out what's going on with the, something we need to get going.
Because then trees get down, it's going to do a lot more damage to them than it is us.
Yeah, unless it's a car going by.
Yeah, I, my neighbor has huge cut-leaf maples, which are soft and that sort of stuff. And several years ago, power company came through, said these are coming down. I mean, right, right in the front yard, put a great big tape around them. Nothing's happened, but the, the power company was going to take these huge things down.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a 50-50. Like I said, I want the board to be aware that this is on the table.
Yeah.
And we have to do something about it. Whether or not the power company is going to do it is up in the air. I know they've done a lot of work in other towns.
I like them. They just took two huge ones down.
Yeah, and in some of them, they took down a whole bunch of trees. That was after we had like almost non-stop power outages. But, you know, we'll have to see. But it is quite a project.
Needs to be looked into, okay?
Yeah.
Would you say all these trees need to be dealt with this season?
That's what I have a phone call in. I missed him a couple of times this week, but.
They've been looked at over the last six or eight years. There's usually never enough money, so it just keeps.
Yeah.
Okay.
More and more and more.
And that's the angle I'm really coming at. It comes to the point where kicking that can down the road can't go on any longer. And these have been deteriorating, so it's either the power company comes and does something, or we might have to do something.
Remember one, several years ago, Michael Biddy was a tree warden. He said there was $500 in the budget. Now we take down one tree.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, our budget is, is a couple of thousand. Do things like, we have a couple in Howard Park that have to come down. There's one over at Rod and Gun Club that has to come down. But when you get into this numbers, when I got this list, that's.
Three of those hazards are in the park. Big tree, big maple.
Okay. Okay. But the rest we have, we're working on a schedule, because we need to make sure things are moving along. Is flex time built into the schedule? There is a certain amount of money involved here. Just the, for example, yeah, the total budget we have combined for tree removal is $8,500 from last year and this year. Because I put more in this year thinking we got to cut down some trees. Well, we have to cut down a lot more than I was planning on. The culverts, we have more than enough money to replace the 17 culverts. We have a grant that we're going to get to in a few minutes that we just got approved by the state, or the state picked us, to give us $14,000 for culvert and drainage work around town. I talked to BCR, see they'll cover some, like the ones down on Saligann or is it Meade in Murphy Hill to fix that. So the map the state has of where drainage needs work to be done, that's all marked in purple where it needs to be done, and it's almost the entire town. So 14,000 isn't going to get us very far. But combined this year, we'll have like $32,000 to work on culverts and drainage issues. And that doesn't include the 20,000 that we have to, and another grant to work on the upper end of Shasberry Hollow, because we got that separately to work on the drainage up there, because a lot of that is going into the White Creek. And then we have money for paving, which again, I don't think we're going to do much this year. Although, the question of aprons kind of intrigued me, because there was a very good quote on Cory Drive, and looking at it, it might be something that, that we should do. And then one thing I was going to ask Steve to do this afternoon was, let's go take a look and get some estimates for like the top of North Road going down. Maybe we should knock off a few of these this year, because we don't have, we don't have a grant to match, and maybe we should tackle some of the little things and just get a little bit ahead. But there's probably a few aprons we could, we could do. The price does seem pretty good. And then the rest is all the drains. We do come up a little bit short in all the projects we want to do, but I think, I think we'll probably manage it somehow. Have to see how the summer goes.
Short on time or short on money?
A little short on money. Well, not even a little.
Well, thanks. Depends what the weather does.
Yeah, we come up about, all the projects, French drains, gravel on the hollow, Porton Hill, fabric projects on East Road, Myers, West Mountain, Shasberry Hollow, two more projects on Myers. Comes to about $138,000, which leaves us about $51,000 short. But we'll see. We'll see what we can do as we move along with it. And of course.
Well, we said we wanted to get this done before. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to leave ourselves in a situation where we're going to be, you know-
I think it is.
-like we were this last month season, in the same spots.
I think we need to move, move it ahead as much as we can. Rather than the money, it's more going to come down to if it ever stops raining, because I have to build some flex time into the schedule. And one of the things I was going to discuss with Steve is what to kick off the schedule to create more flex time, because right now we're booked solid. And if it rains and rains, it's going to turn into a more, a question of timing than, than the money. Because 50,000, we still have money left over from the last winter. This year, we're looking at, I mean, I figure it will be about 25,000 under the budget right now, but that's going to be gone. That's one of the things Steve's going to do, I know in the next week or two, is finish the end of Eric Road, which is desperately short of material, and that's going to eat up probably what, half of that, Steve?
Yeah.
So by the time we do one more little project, you know, that'll be gone. So it's just out there. It's numbered, a working schedule. But again, given the weather this year, we will get as much of it as is done as we can. As long as it's scheduled and you know where you can flex out to other things, we can keep up. I don't really see it as a challenge in doing any of the work we have planned if it doesn't rain every day. You know, because rain leads to more problems too.
Okay, well, keep us posted, because we want to make sure we get as much of this as we can get done. And, you know, if we, like we said, what happened to us in February was something like an emergency, and sometimes, you know, we have emergency funds for just that reason.
Yeah.
So if it, if it takes that, let's get it done.
Yeah, I think if, like I said, if we can maintain the schedule and we get into September and we haven't been backed off by too many storms, then we can finish every one of these and then move on to the winter prep, the more ditching and the transfer station. I think we're in fairly good shape. Along those lines also, because we did have a retirement, Tim Green retired after 35 years. I discussed with some members of the board separately that we were not running out to hire a replacement right away. Want to evaluate. Down the road, I had always envisioned when an open came up that we might- Want to evaluate down the road, I had always envisioned when an open came up that we might stay at five and contract out parts of both of the projects. I think we wanna take some time to look at that. And I'm going to put out a bid soon to see about the winter plowing route. Someone wants to plow for the winter. Instead of hiring someone part-time to just come use one of our trucks, use one of your trucks and be in the village, pave roads, which can actually do with a one-ton pickup. So we'll, we'll see how that goes. With the projects we have and the manpower allocations, we can do everything we plan to do with what we have now. I was thinking of maybe using some of this to contract out some of the work. But until we resolve the trees, I think we might wanna hold on that. This is trees, if the power company does it, it'd be great. If they don't, or if we have to split it or something, we could use that as a healthy reserve. Because again, like Steve said, this is not the first year. This is the second and the third and the fourth and the fifth.
My, my question with the trees is that if we have somebody cut them down, if we hire somebody to cut them down, are we still liable for anything that happens to the wires?
All right, that all has to be done with the power company. Power company has to.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. If the power company says, "No, we're fine with those trees," but yet we want them gone.
That's what we'll have to see because there's a certain level of, they may not wanna spend the money, but I don't know.
I've never known the power company say we think we could not cut down the tree.
Yeah, I can't see that either. They'd be more than happy if someone helped them get rid of these things.
I think they'd like every tree anywhere near a.
Well, I think, well, my question is, is if something happened bad while cutting the tree down.
That's, that's the responsibility of the person cutting them down.
Cutting the tree, okay.
Nothing to do with us.
And that's why you get into, like I said, it would be something that was bid out. You know, Esq, was it Esq Plumb, or however you pronounce that, and a couple of the other companies. The big companies that work, power companies all the time.
Okay.
I don't know where this is gonna shake out, but it's on the board should be aware of that.
But we would be taken out of the equation as far as.
Oh, yeah, we have no liability. If we contract with someone, they have their insurance, they have their responsibility. And if they knock down the power lines, they have to pay to put them up.
Okay, good.
No, our guys do do a bit of tree work on smaller stuff and then, which is, we would be responsible. But we don't cut down trees around power lines. We're, we're taking out, you know, stuff that I can probably do with my chainsaw.
No. And anything large, Greater Heights comes and, and takes care of everything high up. We don't do any tall trees. Nobody's qualified to do that. And Greater Heights, then again, of course, is bringing their insurance and everything else to it. Because some tall is on the ground, it's still their responsibility.
What's the plan, Dave, as far as if you're gonna have a priority with the fabric jobs and the French drains? Or, because I think those two are gonna, we're gonna get more value out of that as far as the spring next year if we can concentrate on them as much as we can.
Well, it turns into a mixed bag because as you go through the summer, you have vacations and you have a max work period of Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday because we have water department responsibilities and parks responsibilities. So what we do is we have more or less big power weeks where we do large jobs like the 700 feet in Shasberry Hollow, 1,500 on East Road. But then that'll be followed by potentially a French drain week. And this is if we, how we finish this off. And then culverts because someone else is on vacation. But then we go back to three straight weeks of fabric projects because everyone will be here. You know, and then you get into, did we lose a few days because it rained? So it will, it'll be a mixed bag of projects moving from one to the other, week by week, vacation week by vacation week. And then adjusted on the fly if we use in flex time for rain. If it rains on Monday and Tuesday, we need to move that project into the following week and kick everything back a week. Because on Thursday, we have water department, and on Thursday and Friday, we have parks.
Yeah, no, I mean, I understand a lot, but what I'm saying is, I think we're gonna get more benefit as far as down the road next year for, for the spring, mud season. And we'll get more out of the fabric and the drain French drains as far as future benefit.
Yeah, I think, I really don't see any problem in doing the, the East Road project or at least one of the three Myers segments, the Shasberry Hollow segment. I really don't see those as an issue. Uh, Horton Hill by Biarritz, because that's a short, easy thing. I, I, every, every one can be done. It's, it's, it's not money, it's, it's weather.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah, you still, you know, and that even is gonna affect this, you know, you can't replace a culvert in the middle of a rainstorm. So.
Can't replace them at all sometimes. The state says you can't. There's a pond there.
We're working on the pond.
We have a drought anytime soon. The pond level will go down. It'll be set.
Could lots of beavers who's over there at 2:00 AM.
Yeah. But Steve and I and Ron are gonna meet and try to finalize this out tomorrow so that we can pick up and keep going. I think if we stick to the plan as best we can, and when people know what they're expected to do on Monday, they come in and fire up the trucks and get going and let's get it done. And I think Steve was talking about 500-foot sections a day, so I think that's a reasonable amount. There will be truck rentals with this too. But we've already figured this into the budget for it. Because the key thing is to keep the greater, the guys on-site moving the whole time. And for the most part, especially Myers, which is right up the road from the pit and East Road isn't that bad. But going out to the hollow, that takes a little bit more effort. Because we wanna get it from over here at Daleys. And so that's a little bit more trucking expense, but I think it'll work out.
Had you asked Green Mountain Power, like you say, they've got crews that go around and just take trees down for them. If their trees happen to coincide with ours, maybe we could say, "Well, you take them down and we'll pay you for half of it."
You know, like I said, this is, I'm just letting the board know tonight because I just was looking at this last week and was kind of, I got out my yellow highlighter. I was just gonna highlight the high priority ones, and it turned out. Yeah, I should have highlighted the good ones. So, you know, it was, it was such a large number, I wanted the board to know that, you know, we, there is a flex in, in our budget this year because of the retirement. And this might be the thing that has to fill it. But everything's on the table with Green Mountain, how they work. Maybe a lot of these, maybe they have a crew that's supposed to start here mid-July. It's, anything's possible, so.
Because when I went for the time we did that, it worked out really good for everybody.
Well, there, there's, there's limits, and that does work out if someone's doing the tree work and we're doing the groundwork. But we have a very full schedule. If I can put it off to the end of September, beginning of October, we, we can put people with them. And I, you know, that's.
Right, I understand, but it just doesn't win the same money for your daughter.
Oh, absolutely. That's why we use Greater Heights all the time when we have one or two trees. Because he does the high work and, and the crew chips it up and everything, so.
All right. Is that it for the roads?
Our sign posted the end of Madison Road on Horton Hill, it's just tipped over. It's still got the concrete block on it and everything, so just did a hole and set it back up.
Oh, and East Road and Buck Hill, it's turned the wrong way. So those of us that know.
Again?
Really? Did you fix it?
I thought we did fix that a little.
Yeah, it's still showing, it's rotated 90 degrees so that if you actually didn't know which road was which, you would, you would guess wrong from the way the sign is situated. So look at that too. We can rotate that, that would be.
And the stop sign at the end of Hidden Valley is bent over too. You can see it, but you really pull it back.
Okay. Oh, and when is the state gonna fix our signs that they promised to fix us over on White Creek and such?
We tried.
Signed something that said they just wanted permission to upgrade the signs for us.
Speed limit, the signs were wrong size and all illegal.
Yeah, because that was all, that was all part of that agreement back when it was getting paved.
So I haven't said anything about the speed limit sign on Bank Street that's laying on the side because I'm waiting for the state to fix it. So that's worth checking into.
Cold Spring Road and Colter's, the sign's missing there too.
Yes, it's in California.
The signs are. I know.
I don't know about that. That agreement's seven years old. Okay.
What did you hear on the truck date?
Uh, nothing. You didn't get any update today, right?
No.
Uh, what the bill paid for was going over to DeLore's, getting a variety of ailments fixed. It's down at, what is the name of that place, Steve?
It's Kaiser.
Kaiser's.
Yeah, and they're just gonna check it out, make sure that it's all in line. Insurance did pay for everything that was done at DeLore's. That was the revenue. So the damage wasn't terrific. Well, $7,000 isn't cheap, but it wasn't terrific. I'm basically, literally fell over. So hopefully that, they're gonna check, they're, they're doing the frame there. And was there still a question on the piston?
I believe that's a lot of what's holding the top a little bit since it's in there. The big piston's bent, so is the mountain that hooks it up. And once they get all that loose and set the body down, it should come back.
Going down this axis, is it?
I believe so.
All right, ready to move on? All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Item nine, BRS update. Tony, Tony and I met with Forrest Wayan at Bennington County, a Bennington Rescue Squad this week.
Oh.
I'll let you fill us in on that.
Great. Forrest would like to come in, I think he said June, maybe July, to talk to us about the rescue squad and what they do. I think between Tim and me, we learned a lot from Forrest and I had an orientation before that. What he'd like to know is what kind of stats, what kind of information do you need to make, to help you with decisions about funding in the future? I mean, there are a lot of things that I wasn't aware of, but Tim was. Like what they get paid for, what they don't get paid for, the number of people they revive and transport by town. He's got all of those stats. So I'm wondering if there's anything in particular you'd like to know.
One of the things that was discussed was, that involves stats, was, you know, what kind of stats in terms of, how often does Benning, does Bennington Rescue Squad service Shasberry relative to Arlington Rescue Squad, which we also contribute to? And that would be good to know. That would maybe help us evaluate this. One of the things that we learned that I didn't know is that we can, we can specify, we can choose but when we, and tell 911 service that we would rather, you know, one or the other be the first call. And right now, I think they have it divided up geographically. But, you know, it's worth looking into because, you know, if we end up paying, you know, a lot more for Bennington Rescue Squad and, you know, we look at the stats and see that, you know, even though Arlington's closer, they're volunteer, it might be the case that Bennington Rescue can service people all over Shasberry faster than, than Arlington can. So things like that are things that we wanna evaluate.
They're also the only rescue squad in the area that can deliver emergency advanced care that the other squads cannot. So oftentimes, they will be called, first of all, say Arlington would be called, but then Arlington realizes that this patient really needs advanced care, then Bennington would be called to come in and do it. And they just won an award, national award, for the number of lives saved.
They can, because they're, because of their training, they can determine if they go right from the site to Albany rather than stopping at Bennington.
Tony, all their people? Is he saying all their people can do that, or just their paramedics?
Well, it's, there's, there's different levels. They have very few regular EMTs. Most of them are advanced EMTs.
Yeah, that's what Arlington staffs those with, and they're paid during the day.
Okay, but then at night, it's the Bennington Rescue Squad evidently that, that does their, gets called, I think.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because they're, they're just talking about EMTAs down there. They don't, they don't have any other classification, right?
No, that's, it.
There's tiers, yeah. Yeah, everywhere has them, yeah.
I'm more interested, one of the things I would like to see is how Bennington compares with other places such as Rutland. I mean, it just seems so they have a lot bigger, more vehicles and that sort of stuff compared to Rutland or something. But there may be other services in Rutland that's, that we don't have in Bennington or anything. It's just.
I think one of the questions is, again, with equipment is, and then being paid and not being paid for certain things is all boils down to the transport.
Transport, yeah.
And services in, in most other places, I'm not familiar with, with the actual rules in Vermont, but they have different levels of transport vehicles right down to basically a van. And you can't take a paramedic unit and be reimbursed when the person only needs a van. So it's a choice of equipment or a lack of competitiveness around here because they're the only business in town. So I think that has to be a question on how many of these calls are, are transports? And what level of transport are they? Because many units can transport, we're taking someone back to one of the nursing homes or assisted living places. That rarely requires an EMTAE unit, and it's not that they're not gonna be paid for one if that's what they happen to have there. If you go to Pittsfield, I forget the name of the service that provides them, they, they have transport vans and different levels. I know that's harder as you get more rural, but just, just a question. I mean, what percentage of calls are transports, non-emergency transports, and what percentage are, are emergencies?
Okay.
Do they charge the same for just a transport or regular medical travel?
It's a question of what you're gonna be paid back for.
Right.
Because you're submitting this to, to Medicare and Medicaid for most cases. And even your private insurance carriers won't. If you roll out, you know, what we would have called a paramedic unit to pick someone up at the hospital and take them back to the nursing home, they're not paying for a paramedic yet. You know, it's not gonna happen. So I notice the fee structures and, and the types of units available that, you know, some questions could be asked.
I was gonna say, I've often heard of people that, you know, don't drive, but yet they need to, to go to a, you know, to the hospital. So instead of calling a taxi, they'll just call the, the rescue squad.
But that's the bane of all emergency services is, and if you have an ambulance, you're gonna get that call. I mean, that's, that's just part of it, you know? That happens everywhere, big, small, middle.
Right, right.
But to that point, do you need a full-fledged huge thing that has a life support system and all that sort of stuff in it to do that? I guess you don't know when you get the call. Is that the problem?
Yeah, yeah. My experience with those is you take, take the unit out there on a call, woman requesting this, she's having chest pains. And you open the door and she's packed and ready for her, her admission. Because as, you know, it's kind of like you can't, you know, get there. So, you know, she's going in and you do it. So that's one of the difficulties of it, but.
Okay, well, that's.
Yeah, pretty much have to operate under the assumption it is a real emergency. Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, so I guess one of the situations where you might use a less equipped truck would be if somebody is just going from the hospital back to skilled nursing.
Yeah, and that can be a very expensive problem.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and we're continuing to have more meetings with Bennington Rescue Squad as we, you know, look at this funding situation. We have another meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Any other questions on, on that one?
Okay, item 10, TAM host town agreement renewal.
We had voted last week to discontinue the host town tax on TAM that we don't impose on any other carriers in town. Dave, you brought up an issue about tonnage. Can you explain that to us?
Yes, back in 2012, a, the DRB approved an application to increase the tonnage at TAM's facility to 30,000 tons. There's permits are in place that he needs to do this. The line directly out of the decision said. Uh, the line directly out of the decision says, "At this time, TAM has a host town agreement with the town of Shastberry, which currently limits the tonnage to twenty thousand tons per year. Therefore, this decision shall limit the site to twenty thousand tons until this agreement is altered." Uh, and that's what we're doing now. At any time when the host town agreement is increased above twenty thousand tons, the facility may increase tonnage to the limits of the host town agreement. However, the facility may not increase above thirty thousand tons under this decision. So, in March of two thousand and twelve, the DRB approved the increase to thirty thousand tons. The permits are in place, this is the first time this has been renegotiated since then. So, uh, the difference was, and it wasn't brought up at the last meeting, that it would be time to change to twenty thousand or thirty thousand tons. The DRB, um, has the whole finding of facts, which they sent around to everybody in the decision. Um, there's no reason to think that anything's changed in the last twelve years, except they proved they're not really doing anything to the roads over there. And this requires, according to the decision, no change to the facility at all.
So, you would, Tim, you would like a, like a motion to amend the, uh, vote that we had last meeting to include thirty thousand tons rather than twenty? Which is probably on the, which is probably part of the document that we approved, is that right?
It is. It is in number fifteen, mandatory renegotiation. TAM and Shastberry will renegotiate changes in the fee structure and other aspects of this agreement. Anytime there is an increase above, it says twenty thousand, that should now be thirty thousand.
Right.
Is there, uh, any urgency on approving this document tonight? I'm kind of inclined to do what Art suggests and make a motion to increase the tonnage to thirty thousand and then approve it at our next meeting to see if we get any feedback about that.
I don't know what feedback there is, if the DRB approved it.
Point is well taken.
It's gone, it's gone through the public, the public process, the public hearing process.
Yeah, I guess it was approved, it just needed, uh, just the paperwork change to, uh, you know, to change it, okay.
I was just gonna say, so what happens if, if it doesn't get approved?
No, the, the DRB approved, they asked to do this back in two thousand and twelve, the DRB approved, but they wouldn't let it go through until we renegotiated the host town agreement.
What we did last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, and because it's a five-year agreement, it's just coming up now. So, it has been vetted publicly, granted five years ago, but--
Well, it was, uh, the, the DRB approved potentially going up to thirty thousand tons, right? And at the time, the, the host town agreement set it at twenty thousand tons.
Yes.
And so now, we're given the option of going to thirty thousand tons.
I think they've read that in, between the time that the DRB approved it and when we approved it, if it ever did go above twenty, that's okay, as long as it doesn't go above thirty. So they have been given approval to go all the way to thirty, until which time it's renegotiated.
Yeah, I'm just, my, my main thought is there was a lot of acrimony about this back in the day. Uh, we removed the tax last time, uh, have not heard anything, I have not heard anything from anyone about that. Uh, the, the DRB did approve, uh, a limit of thirty thousand tons from a bylaws point of view. It's still the purview of the select board to approve it from a political point of view, I guess you could say. Um, but if we're agreed, then I think, uh, that we can go to thirty thousand tons, then, uh, all that remains to be done is approve this new host town agreement. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve it for thirty thousand, no?
There is a motion to approve the new host town agreement with TAM that includes removal of the host town tax and an increase in, uh, operating capacity to thirty thousand tons.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 So that motion, approving a new host town agreement with TAM, removing the host town tax on TAM, and increasing operating tonnage to thirty thousand tons is approved by a vote of five zero zero.
Sign that, and then I'll have Trevor sign it for TAM. While that's going on, do you want me to start insurance?
Do we have a choice?
No. Uh, the insurance contracts are up again for the TAM. Uh, this year, we're not gonna go out for bid, I think next year, we will go through the whole process of, uh, that was done, I think, three years ago, of having, well, last time only BLCT came in, their bid was much higher. Uh, this year, the insurance for the TAM will be up slightly, two thousand dollars, which is eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, uh, higher than what I estimated in total, I'm sorry. I mean, from fifty thousand to fifty-two thousand, eight thirty-five. I estimated it would go to fifty-two thousand, so, uh, it's only eight hundred and thirty-five dollars above what we've already budgeted. Um, just a reminder, we've been with, uh, Wills for some forty-plus years. Uh, frankly, my experience with it has always been excellent, including our latest, uh, event using them, and, uh, the service is good, the carriers provide prompt, quick response to all our phone calls, and the, the cost has not really moved at all in the last few years. And, uh, it hasn't even gotten to the point where the last competitor, BLCT, had their initial bid three years ago, so, I think we're in fairly good shape with staying with them. Um, Dave Newell will be here, uh, he couldn't make it tonight, uh, he can't be here for the next meeting either, but will be here, uh, the second meeting in July, I'm sorry, the first meeting of August, just go over the unemployment aspects of it, what our current, uh, rates are regarding that. But, uh, it'll be news, and I think it's, it's an acceptable deal. We, we basically do this every year, but, uh, I think I spoke to Tim, I think next year, we go through the whole, putting it out. We, we have many of these with BLCT that just renew annually, and this one, I said, the service is good, decades of experience with the company, so.
Yeah, the only other competitor is BLCT, really, we looked at them, what, three years ago?
Yeah, three years ago, and it was quite a bit higher than this.
It was.
Almost, almost a third higher.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's actually higher than what we're paying now, three years later.
So when's our, when is our, when's our, uh, does it renew?
It renews in, in July.
July.
Uh, at different aspects, we renew at different times, but, uh--
You mean a motion, or?
Uh, you have the board, uh, make the motion.
I'll make that motion, it, uh, we renew, uh, our policy with Wills. For one more year.
For one more year, correct.
We have a motion from Art to renew our insurance policy with Wills for one year.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion to renew insurance with Wills is approved by a vote of five zero zero. Yeah, 'cause we're, we're only planning a, uh, an emergency or a special meeting to sign warrants between now and first of July, so it's appropriate to go ahead and do it.
All right, I mentioned a little earlier, we were asked to participate in municipal roads grants in a pilot project, this has to do with, uh, municipal roads general permit, which has to do with water runoff and, and waterways. Uh, we've been chosen and awarded a grant of fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars, which we have a cash or in-kind match of twenty-eight twenty. This is the base amount the state will give us. If some of the other towns listed on here aren't interested, we'll get more. It was like two-point-one million around the state. So, uh, it's, it's pretty straightforward, I've already talked to Jim down at ECRC on projects we had lined up anyway that now can be funded by this. Uh, so it just needs the board's approval and a signature, and, uh, it basically supplements the culvert work I was talking about earlier, culverts in a French range.
Seventeen culverts?
Uh, yeah, this, this will cover, cover all those, but, uh, it'll give us a lot of flexibility to do a number of projects.
So the state's awa- awarding us with fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand, one hundred at minimum. It, it may actually be more. You know, as, your money's allocated around the state, I guess, if towns, for whatever reason, 'cause everyone has to abide by this municipal roads general permit.
It's all part of this Clean Water Act.
Yeah, it's all part of the Clean Water Act.
It's gonna cost us.
It's gonna cost us, as I said, you know, the fourteen thousand is great, but when I pulled up the map talking to Jim, they marked the areas in purple, well, like, the entire town's in purple. I'm like, oh, you know, Jim, this'll do like fifty feet, what are we gonna do? But, uh, it's a start.
Yep.
We've got, what, thirty-two in the bank to put towards it?
Uh, no, that'll be thirty-two total, including this.
Including the fourteen thousand, okay, so twenty-two, yeah.
Yeah, so this, uh, it's gonna be interesting, 'cause it is all part of that act. Uh, it's, it's a state mandate that's very difficult for a town like ours, that has seventy miles of roadways and a few streams and rivers in it, and, uh, how you get this all together to meet this is yet to be seen. And we're not the only people in this boat here.
Do, do we get involved, any special rules, regulations, or extra strings down there? Because we go for this?
Well--
Yeah, that's kind of the point of this, is the state is going to mandate that we do things a certain way.
That's right.
And we're signing on early to say we're gonna do things a certain way.
Yeah.
Uh, relative mostly to, to clean water, as you say.
I mean, at a minimum, the ditch gotta be ceded now and all that sort of--
Yeah, yeah.
Settling pools, rather than going directly into a stream.
There's a whole list of things that, even the twenty thousand that I got from, from, uh, back roads, or better roads they call it, for the upper parts of Shastberry Hollow, you know? I had to have an engineer come and design, now I have to have an engineer come to make sure we, it's, it's a lot of stuff, but--
Even if you didn't take the fourteen thousand, you'd still be mandated--
You'd still gonna do, I have to do it anyway.
To do all this.
Okay, well, good.
We do, we do have to, yeah.
We might, we might save a year of not having to do it this way, but, um--
Yeah, and the whole town has to be done by the best management practices. And you just have to do it, it's, this is a drop in the bucket.
You wanna do that anyway, Dave, I'm just saying, everyone gets into something where, well, you know, you do it now, and we'll pay you, but then for the next ten years, you're gonna do it, we're not gonna pay you for it.
Well, that's already done, 'cause the Clean, Clean Water Act says we have to do it anyway.
Okay, well--
We have to do it whether we get money or not.
I don't want these little strings in the background, dude.
This is a pretty straight rope.
Okay. With a moose on it.
And that just needs to be signed by the board if, uh, they approve it, and--
Okay, I need a motion to, um, sign the letter of intent to participate in the municipal roads grants and aid pilot project.
Hold on.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion is approved, five zero zero. All right, we're done with that one, we're on to parking restrictions on Buck Hill Road at Route Seven.
Okay, in a meeting with the State Craft Committee last week, uh, parking restrictions were approved on Route Seven and Eight. They'll extend south from the intersection of Buck Hill, a hundred and thirty-five feet to the first driveway, and they'll extend north, uh, these are both on the east side, extend north, excuse me, north fifty feet, which is the, the property area of the telephone pole on the northeast corner. Uh, the state will do all the markings, uh, as they get to it. Um, but all the property owners on the corner were notified of this hearing. People were given the opportunity to, uh, participate online or to go to Montpelier. Um, we had no one take us up on that, so the conference call took place and, um, it was approved. This is actually, had been recommended by the state as far back as two thousand and twelve, that, uh, this, we should vigorously pursue sightline issues here. There was a thought, I believe, that the sidewalk project and all that would help take care of it, but it, it didn't. It's, the sightline is terrible coming out of here, which, that's all I heard. I received no responses from the letter sent out, it was put, uh, on the front page of the webpage. Um, we received no comments, neither did the state or request for changes. It will really have no effect, other than the parking right in front of the apartment building across the street that, uh, the town does lease at a very nominal cost, parking area for all those tenants off Buck Hill Road, so there's virtually no effect to anyone, except maybe a little short and wrong, but that's-- It'll make the school crossing much safer. I don't think any of us have ever come out of this corner without having not seen a car coming up, so, it'll make it happy for everyone. Uh, the next item on the, yeah, no, I'm sorry, we're done with that.
Yeah, we wanted to mention the sidewalk, sidewalk scoping grant that we, we, uh, talked about.
Yeah, I looked, uh, deeper into the pedestrian and bicycle grant to do a scoping study for the corner to see where we should extend the sidewalk. Uh, it's a fifty percent match at the scoping study range, which could be, for us, ten to fifteen thousand dollars, which I just didn't think was, uh, the thing to do at this point. So I think we should wait a little bit and have a better idea, maybe generate some public discussion on what we wanna go this way, so we can cut back, at least on the scoping studies down the road a little bit. But we've just finished one long, expensive project, uh, I, when I first looked at it, I didn't realize that the scoping study would be that expensive, and we had to pay fifty percent of it. Uh, usually these are ten to twenty, fifty just makes it just that much more. So we'll settle in with Tony here, we'll see how the parking restrictions do, and we can pick this up next year and, and if, uh, it seems viable.
What is the standard fee for a scoping study?
Uh, it all depends, it's all engineers, it depends on the project, you know? Uh, but there's minimums to it, and the minimum is usually around twenty, is what they were saying.
Okay.
So a limit, and our responsibility, ten thousand dollars to look into this at this point, and, uh, there's other things on the table right now. But we can get back to it, and like I said, we just finished a very long sidewalk project, so--
Yeah, when we approved that, I think we were all thinking, you know, a couple of thousand dollars, or not, ten or fifteen thousand dollars as our match, so, uh, at the time, you know, a thousand or two, why not? But at ten or fifteen thousand--
Turns into a lot of money, it's a hard call.
So what does that buy you?
It gives you an idea, it gives you a plan.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Doesn't give you a sidewalk, no.
Yeah, then you have to hire the engineers, actually design the whole thing, so--
So the, the spending's not done yet?
Yeah.
Hire the engineers, and then, then you go in to put the plan into action.
Yeah, so the other approach is to, uh, when the appropriate time comes to start talking it up and getting some of the stakeholders involved, and what would you actually like to see, like, across the street, across property, the country store, these people on the corner? What do you really wanna see here? Yeah, and the streetscape thing that, that has been talked about, what do you really wanna see here? Uh, then we can go for, for the grant later on. And actually, with the streetscape, we might even be able to shave off the whole, uh, scoping study. That might even be part of it. But it just seemed like too much right now to get involved in that.
Just wondering how necessary it is to have a scoping study.
It's federal money, it's--
It's on a state highway.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we could probably, you know, pick up the phone and build, you know, build a sidewalk for thirty thousand dollars. And then apologize for not doing the paperwork, but I, I don't think that's the way we're gonna do it.
Right.
Did we just trade down on those lights over here, Dave?
Uh, actually, Eric, it didn't get back to me today, uh, the day was Friday. It was, it was supposed to be done, and, uh, I haven't heard it back yet, whether or not it was done. Uh, so we're gonna have to wait till the wee hours, because it's gonna be late tonight and tomorrow night, it's like nine-thirty, so, uh, you know, I think he's doing that on purpose, but, uh, someone, someone's gonna have to come out, take the dog for a walk at midnight tonight and see, see if it's, if it's any darker out here. Um, but that would be it, like, you know, I have the state on him too, because, um, the grant's done, the paperwork's approved, our money's approved, and it's all sitting on-- and it's all sitting on a desktop in Montpelier, because we can't sign the paper accepting the project, because the lights aren't done. So as soon as these lights are done, then we'll just sign the paper we approve, and you know, we'll get all our money back. Right now, the last payment is just sitting up there, and uh, they told me that Hathaway was gonna do it on Friday.
Okay.
So, we'll see.
But it's all agreed, they're gonna put in the dimmers and...
Yeah, they're doing the whole thing.
It's just like we wanted, they just hadn't got us done with it.
Yeah, it's just uh, I don't know what their delay is, but, and Hathaway, all they need is the parts, and they'll go do it. So, I think Casper's a little reluctant to get involved, but who would have preferred not to have to repay them? But, Eric, so I can't help him.
Okay. Uh, item fourteen, road name change.
At the request of the State 911 Board, Town Line Road West, they want to change to Town Line Road. Uh, they're seeing that there is no east anymore, because it was where Route seven went through the middle of it. So, actually, the people in Bennington who live on Town Line Road West, as we call it, call it Town Line Road. So it's coming up two different roads, and the state wants west done away with. Uh, Shelley contacted all the property owners by mail, uh, back on June seventh, and then we haven't heard from anybody. Those we have heard, call it Town Line Road anyway, so...
So, beyond the, beyond the new road, what is that road called?
That is called, uh, I knew that was coming right out of my head. It runs upon the buildings.
Okay, but it's not Town Line Road?
It's not Town Line Road at all, no. Uh, boy, I'm sorry, that went right out of my head.
But before the road went through that, it was all Town Line?
It was Town Line East and Town Line West, now there's no east.
That's right, because someone came in from Bennington.
Yeah, and now there's no, there's no east, and the west is becoming confusing, because Town Line Road is used in Bennington. So they just want, for the Bennington addresses on it, so they just wanna unify it.
Okay.
And no one on the street objects, and actually, this is kind of a mandate from 911, but I put the brakes on it, because only the board can change a road name. So I need the board to make a motion to change the road name from Town Line West to Town Line Road West to Town Line Road. And then it'll be approved, because only the board has the statutory authority to change road names.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Tony has moved that we change the name of Town Line Road West to Town Line Road. Seconded by Ken. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, by vote of five zero zero, Town Line Road West will become Town Line Road.
Okay, the next thing...
We don't have to sign anything?
No. Uh, we can do it by motion to get it going, there might be a paperwork afterwards, but uh... Next thing on the agenda was tax sales, discussed for July eleventh. Uh, I'm only gonna address the tax sales for water, we have three. Uh, one, there's activity on, so I don't know if we're gonna have, we might only have two. Uh, just wanna remind the board that these are taking place. Uh, we will need someone from the board to be at the sale on the eleventh, that's for taxes and for water.
That's uh, July eleventh?
July eleventh, which is Tuesday.
Do you have a time on that? Because I've done those before.
Ten AM. Wait a minute. Sorry, this is a different thing. So I make that to seventeenth. The sale's on the seventeenth, they have to leave eleventh to take action.
Okay, you still think it's at ten AM?
Yes.
And that's here, right? That's where they have been in the past, yeah.
Of the two possible ones, are they both tax and water?
Uh, they're all, uh, two are tax, you know, all three are tax and water.
Tax and water?
And water, yes.
We haven't done anybody with just water yet?
No, we thought we were, but it turned out to be otherwise.
And just a reminder, those things, those properties go to tax sale to pay the delinquent taxes. Usually someone will show up to buy the properties. If no one does, I, as the select board, representing the select board, will make a bid on the property equal to the amount of delinquent taxes. And then, if nothing else happens in the ensuing year of waiting...
One year, one full year.
Yeah, then, then we end up with that property that we can resell for uh, for our delinquent taxes, that's all we're allowed to sell it for. Usually what happens is after that happens, during that waiting period, the owner finds the money to pay the taxes, and it gets taken care of. And what even more usual than that is that somebody will buy the property at tax sale. Often not necessarily to own the property, but just to earn the interest that they get by uh, by putting their money in wait for a year, because it's uh, it's like twelve percent interest that they get for doing that, which is good by today's standards.
Yeah, leaps and bounds ahead of the bank.
Yeah, because we're getting like, point twelve percent on our money right now, so, so yeah, those are good, good rates.
Okay, July eleventh.
July seventeen.
Eleven, make it eleven, sorry.
It is the eleventh?
Yeah, it is the eleventh.
It is the eleventh, Thomas.
So I know it was the day after, but...
July eleventh, ten AM, call hall, okay. Okay, anything else on tax sales?
No, that's uh...
All right, dog licenses and ordinance violations.
Okay, uh, as of the thirteenth, we have ninety people who have one or more unlicensed dogs, uh, which is quite a lot. Uh, we are in the process of ramping up to start issuing summonses. Uh, right now, it still remains a ten dollar fine, plus the cost of registering your dog. Uh, that's going to look relatively cheap in a few weeks. Uh, after the constables come to your home and leave notice, you'll have two weeks to pay the violation, which is thirty-five dollars, plus the cost of registering your dog. Uh, if a summons is issued, after that two weeks, there's gonna be court costs involved in it, and the fines are gonna go up considerably, they can go up to a hundred and fifty dollars. I'm just bringing this up, we talk about this quite often. Please register your dog, there are ninety people on this list who haven't registered their dogs yet. This is a state law, it has to be done, and we're responsible to find out who has rabies shots and who doesn't. So this is kind of been off to the side a little bit, uh, but we have forums, I have new people signed up, we're back in the judicial bureau, and I have two hundred summonses downstairs, and I have people to write them. And uh, we would just like you really just to register your dog, it's the late fee now, plus the normal registration fee, it's gonna hit thirty-five dollars plus the normal registration fee, then it's gonna go higher if we actually issue a summons, because then the judicial bureau is gonna want a fee for the paperwork having been served. And if you go to court, then you have to pay the town's court attorney if you're found guilty, so... Please come down and take care of your dogs now, while it's ten dollar fine, because after the constables go out, it's gonna go up right away. And the waiver fine, if people are thinking of that, is not gonna be that much less, so... Uh, again, if you have a dog that was ever licensed here and you haven't renewed the license, please come do it now before the constables are at your door and the fines go up quite a lot.
And the people on that list have already received multiple notices, correct?
Oh yeah, they get the first notice way back from the clerk, then the late notice from the clerk. They're well informed that we missed them.
Right.
And uh, many of them, I think probably their dog, they don't have their dog anymore, uh, but we still need to know that. And not responding is gonna wind up with a violation and a summons, and if the summons is issued, you still have to come and deny it. So, please, just contact the town clerk, come down, register your dog for the ten dollar fine now. I know the board has waived these fines before to encourage people coming, we reduced the fees, and we still have ninety people who haven't registered their dogs, it's probably close to a hundred and forty dogs too. So it's, don't wanna have to bring out this part of it, but you know, we have to come take care of this.
Yeah, and again, we say this every time, but we do, we do this, and the state makes us do this for health reasons, to make sure that people are getting their dogs vaccinated. It's not that we're trying to make money on this or anything else, it's a health issue. All right, item seventeen, bid proposal on F three fifty.
Uh, we've been looking for a used pickup truck for a while now, and have not found anything that really pans out correctly. Uh, we've found several new trucks in different car dealerships that would fit the bill, and we've made up a invitation to bid on a one-ton pickup truck for the town. The one-ton would be the equivalent of the five fifty we have out here, except for much more versatile, it can plow, it can carry a sander, but most importantly, for the other ten months of the year, or eight months of the year, it can be used for all the utility purposes that currently we, other than the Dodge, we don't have something to fill. So we still wind up having a rather large truck go out with something that a pickup truck could do, and say where and tear on the larger trucks, and just be more versatile, uh, which is what we're really looking for. We have enough big things, we've kind of overlooked uh, something that has more utilitarian value to it, to do a whole bunch of different things. Uh, however, like I said, it can have a plow package in it, it can have a sander in it, a spreader, just like the one we have now. Uh, because it's lower, it won't project it as much as it does off the Dodge, and it just will suit a lot of the needs that the crew has. It's easier to go on small things with a proper vehicle than everyone, you know...
Will this just be a standard pickup that won't have a flatbed body or anything else like that on it?
Uh, no, it'll be a standard pickup.
Standard pickup body?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, you know, yeah, a standard pickup body is what we're planning, although we had that discussion too, of getting the frame and having a flatbed body put on it, because you can do that relatively cheaply too.
Like a dump body, electric or a Honda?
No, 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 just a, a flatbed body. Norm has one in North Bennington. People feel differently about it, and I'm not so sure which one is better.
This be an extended cab or just a standard cab?
It'd be a standard cab.
No, no extended cab for, okay?
No. Yeah, it's just a regular cab, uh, it's basically this Super Duty that we found, and uh, just added some things that we need to it, it's all basic. One of the problems we found with looking for a used pickup truck is, used pickup trucks, everyone has all these fancy packages in them, and we're just, and the interiors are too nice too, for people to get in and out dirty all day, and they would just turn into a bit of a mess. If you go down to some dealers, you can find some base trucks, but it's easier just to order one. And uh, because we don't need any of the bells and whistles, we just need this regular four-wheel drive, F three fifty to plow and to do utility work with.
Gas, Joe?
Gas, gas, no diesel, gas.
When you're looking for late model used?
No, we're looking for brand new.
For brand new?
Brand new. Because that'll last out, I mean, at some point, you keep going for used, and the used ones you find have problems, and they've booked out a number of them.
So does the Ford Super Duty, does that have the aluminum box?
Uh, I don't know if this one would have the aluminum box.
Yes.
Does it?
Pretty sure it will.
Yeah, they're not that strong, are they? For, for putting work into, I mean, people complain about them tearing.
Haven't been able to find anything, Dave, two, three years old?
Nope. Everything's all, uh, you know, we need a base truck, and people don't go out and buy those for themselves. People buy them for work, and then when they're ready to be sold used, you don't want it.
Have you priced Chevy and Dodge?
Oh, well, everybody will get it. This, this is one that was mentioned to us, a couple of us just went to look at and check the price out, and it comes in very competitively. We're not picking Fords, Dodgers, Chevys, we're picking price. You know, if, if a Tundra comes in at the right price, I mean, you know, it's, price is, price is the object here. I'm just using the three fifty, because people kind of understand what that is than the Tundra or whatever, but uh... You know, it's a gas V eight, six-speed heavy-duty transmission, gross vehicle weight rating of ten-four, uh, heavy-duty suspension, a plow package, forty-twenty-forty buckets, integrated trailer brake controller, electric mirrors, which are important, uh, three-point-seven-three to four-point-one-oh axle ratio, heavy-duty batteries, running boards, spray-in bed liner, trailer hitch with a seven-way tow package, so very affordable.
Now, you wanted to have a flatbed or just a regular box?
No, the regular box.
Okay.
And you can put the...
The spreader in it.
Chloride spreader in the...
No, no, not the chloride, uh, sand, salt.
Just the, the sander?
Yeah, like the yellow thing on the Dodge, when we put that on. You know, and it has the same capacity as the five fifty, except it's not diesel, so...
You said bucket seats?
Well, they're not buckets, it's like a bench, but you know...
But you can get three people in the front seat?
Yeah, you can get three going. But we already have one five-passenger truck, and we have five people, so they can still go somewhere if they want. But that's not really, I mean, basically, this is a one-person, two-person truck to go out and do a small project, or when we have people way out in the hollow, you know, you have a runner vehicle, instead of sending, you know, a tandem or you have to go back and forth to get nothing, even the Dodge is a little big, you know, for a simple little chore.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if we don't have the crew cab on it, it'd be nice to be able to get three people in a pit in there if we needed a transport.
Crew cabs are definitely nice. Even if you might have anybody in the back, it's just a great place to still stuff in the meantime, if you're going to a job.
Well, you could probably get an extended cab, but the crew cab is gonna add a lot of money to it. The extended cab adds some, but the crew cab adds a lot.
And you have to have a certain length bed to put your sander in, and so if you get a crew cab with the bed, you've got to go on a hell of a long truck.
That's what the Dodge is, because by the time you have the crew cab and the bed, it's longer than the five fifty.
You're looking at twenty feet.
Yeah.
That Dodge is as long as what you're saying, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the problem with the crew cabs.
Yeah.
And like I said, with one crew cab, I don't really know if we need another crew cab.
Okay.
Now, what we can do is, is put it out and see what the bids come back as.
So what do you want from us?
Uh, just to put out a bid for a twenty-seventeen one-ton pickup truck.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Tony has made a motion to give Dave approval to put out a bid for a twenty-seventeen one-ton pickup truck.
Second.
Seconded by Art.
If it, if it comes into my way, we don't have to...
No, it's not obligation to buy it, it's just, let's get the, this out here, and we do have the equipment reserve fund, uh, and another aspect of this process of having someone retire is to, as we look towards options in plowing, we have a single axle that's coming up now, that might lead to not replacing that, which is a very expensive truck. I mean, that, you're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand now, so...
Are you thinking to put a plow on this?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What are you thinking for a plow?
Uh, the plow specs we haven't done yet, but there's, you can get anything from the nine-to-ten-foot municipal plow to a boss package, but that's, we haven't progressed that far yet, as long as the truck is...
Look into the X...
I'm sorry.
XDS Fisher.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Look into the XDS Fisher plow.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an eight-to-ten foot. It's got a scoop, a little out, and then a scoop, or you can have an eight-foot, they're really good plow.
Yeah, what prompted this, among a number of things, is I, as we were looking at... Yeah, what prompted this among a number of things is, as we were looking at the 550, which I didn't want to replace last year because we didn't have the money. Now I don't want to replace it at all. But to replace a 550 like the one we have here, that's the Ford. You're looking at basically $98,000 all beginning to end. And I've already priced out a 350, and just saying that, I'm not leaning towards Ford. That type of vehicle with a... And I just use Boss, not picking them either. But they're a plow package, they're a spreader, and I could actually buy two of these for the cost of buying a 500, you know, an equivalent to the Ford we have now.
Because one of those plows is like $6,000.
Yeah, yeah.
A Fisher plow.
Yeah, yeah.
And the sander, more than two-yard sander, is probably $6.
You know, it's important to start with the truck that can handle it.
Yeah.
But then, you know, when you look at it, you can... I can literally almost get two of these for the same price.
Right.
And when you're talking about if... I mean, it's not going out into the hollow to plow. We'd be plowing around here, where actually its size is more of a benefit. Because some of these... I mean, we hit a few mailboxes this year backing up because the trucks are large when you get in, especially back here. I forget that little street off of Cleveland that goes down, but...
Middle lane or...
Yeah, thank you, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, there's areas where it's actually beneficial to have a smaller...
But any medic plows, whether either a tandem or a single-axle dump truck for the center of the road, and they follow it?
Yeah.
With a 350?
Yeah. And lots of towns plow with 350s, you know, maybe not so much right around here, but...
And don't sound like...
I know bigger communities and other areas that... Because it's not worthwhile keep maintaining a fleet of large trucks to do it, so... Which is another reason why I'd like to look at having that, starting one contract plow with this year, which all the towns do. Some have done it and gone back, some keep trying. But I think it's worth looking into because it's a good option to the very expensive prospective staff.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of giving Dave approval to seek bids for a 2017 one-ton pickup? Say aye.
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 Motion is approved by 500. All right, updated purchasing policy, elimination of redundant purchase order forms.
We discussed this at a prior meeting and put it out there.
You were going to talk to the auditors about...
Yes, and the auditors frankly didn't understand why we were doing them. They said they rarely see them in a town the size. Part of it is, it's the use of, if you have an encumbrance system where I'm going to order something and it's going to arrive in months, and, you know, this is a much smaller... It actually adds a tremendous amount of paperwork and time. And as I said before, most of this wasn't being done when I got here, and it's still not. It doesn't make a lot of sense. It's just too burdensome. We're a one-man shop. Everything that we do gets signed by me or Joe Vatican, because he does purchases for the fire department separately in most cases, but we're all on the same page. And every single thing above following the purchasing policy, everything over the limits comes to the board for a vote before it can even be purchased. So, you know, everything over $3,000 has to be approved by the board before it's bought to begin with. So it just seemed like a piece of paper that frankly, most of the time, when they were turned in, we would take our four-part carbon list. The person would copy the invoice onto the purchase order, put them together, and all four copies just wind up back in the filing cabinet. It's... We don't have anyone to send them to, so it's just, you know...
So what you circulated is our current purchasing policy approved in 2004, where you edited out the details about generating purchase orders?
Purchase orders. And the other one thing that was in here was monthly, the town administrator was to receive requests from all departments for stationary and things like that, which, you know, if Marlene needs something, she tells me, and I order from Staples on the computer.
Right.
You know, and again, it's just outmoded. It's...
Yeah. All right, so we need a motion to approve the purchasing policy that was circulated this week, the amended purchasing policy. Some will... Moved by Ken?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the new purchasing policy is approved by a vote of 500?
Maybe it should say revised as opposed to amended.
It is revised on the paper itself. It says revised this date.
Okay.
My point is, let's make the motion say revised because they're coincidental.
Okay. Yeah, without objection, the motion will be revised.
It's just a small thing.
Okay, adoption of public records policy.
It came to our attention that the town lacked a formal policy. And just to be clear, because I had one inquiry about this, the public record inspection, copying, and transmission policy does not cover the town clerk. The town clerk is separate and sets her own rules. This has nothing to do with the town clerk. This has to do with coming into the town offices, requesting public records. The clerk is totally separate, and this does not apply to the town clerk. That being said, we took the basic recommendation from VLCT and sent it to the town attorneys to be vetted and to make sure that it fit all appropriate rules. This is essentially the VLCT that Merrill made some adjustments to for the town, mainly in making it clear that on the custodian of records, appeals to my decisions go to the chair of the select board, and then proceeds down the legal course from there. But it sets parameters and standards that are acceptable under state law. It... We never had one here, we never had a reason to. I've talked with many people who've come in and just made copies and handed them whatever they wanted, but things just seem like, well, maybe we should have this formalized because it is recommended by the state. Never had a reason to before, but maybe it's just time to do it.
Yes. So far, all requests for public access to records that have come in have been granted without interruption. But it made us realize that if we got a lot of requests or somebody came in and decided they just wanted to obstruct, cause obstruction, which hasn't happened yet, that we could be... We wouldn't be able to do anything if we haven't set a policy. So it was prudent to set a policy, and VLCT recommends that we have a policy. The policy also includes forms for people to request public records on, and requires that any denial of public records for legal reasons, of which there are a few, has to be submitted to the requister in writing, that sort of thing. Sets, adopts state guidelines for charging for copies, and gives the town a few days, if necessary, to recover records that are not easily found or that are large and require a lot of effort to come up with.
And as I said, this was all, has gone through legal review, and this is the form that they approved for us to adopt.
Is that set to the limits on how long anybody can...
Provides guidelines. There's actually... Would have to be taken on a case-by-case basis. You can't set exact guidelines, is my understanding of it. Exact timeframes. You can't say one-hour limit.
Right, but by the same token, they can't come in and sit there and tie your timer up or anybody you have is all day long to contend with.
Everything would have to be evaluated based on the policy, and legal advice sought beyond that. Open public records is a very strongly supported by the State Supreme Court. I have no problem with it myself. But it just was pointed out that this is a recommendation of VLCT to have, and we don't have one. And should anything come up, we should have something in hand that we can refer to.
So we should implement that right away?
Yeah, the board can implement anything like in this nature. It's not an ordinance, it's just a policy for us to follow.
Back up a little bit, there was something about time. If time limits... Scroll down. If the time limits described have been extended because they're a uniform request.
Yeah, these are time limits for us to produce the records.
Yes, that's right. Yes.
Yeah. Short answer to your question, Ken, really is, no. If somebody wants to come in and inspect records all day long, we're pretty much obliged to let them do that. When they start making copies, we can charge them for copies, including staff time. But if they just want to sit and look at stuff, and we want to keep an eye on them and make sure that things don't get damaged or stolen or mistreated...
Altered.
We have to oblige them.
Oh, no, I understand about the open, but I'm just saying, I just kind of feel that we ought to have something somewhere so that somebody couldn't come in here and just tie it up so that Dave can't do anything else, but maybe you said that?
No, you cannot.
We can't do that.
Yeah, no, we can't. We can request that they provide written requests for documents, and we can request that they specify in greater detail the documents they want if we feel like they're a lot and hard to come by. But in the end, if they want to come in and tie up Dave's time all day long looking at records, we have to oblige them.
Do they have to show any proof of residency or citizenship as an American?
No, no.
They don't?
No, no, it's not required. You can't compel. You can ask, but there's no... They're just open records. Which, like I said, I've not encountered a problem with it. People come in all the time, and you usually pull it out, and then they want to talk about it. You're like, you don't even want to make a copy, you know? But, you know, if someone's coming in...
We realize that we should have a policy.
Yeah.
And we're recommended by VLCT to have a policy.
And the town's attorney strongly recommends it, too, so we should follow along. Yeah, probably should have had one before.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt the proposed policy approval of VLCT and gone over by our attorney.
We have a motion from Art to adopt the proposed public records... Public Records Act policy as outlined by VLCT and amended by town attorney?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So the Public Records Act policy is adopted by a vote of 500?
I need just the chair to sign that. That's how they have this one for some reason.
Is that one-ton truck, we're looking for a dually or just...
Single, no duals.
Very good, Dave. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And item 20, placeholder, town garage updates.
The first update we have is the bond is moving along. I was having some conversations with our bond attorney and Bob Gero at the bond bank today, just the way we park. Because we're taking $75,000 a year to pay for the bond, we have to kind of jump through these hoops because we have to park the money until we get the bill. And of course, when we put it in our bank account, it gains interest. We can't make more interest than the interest being charged on the bond, which currently isn't very hard to do because we get real interest. But because of the length of the bond, we have to figure out a method to protect it because in five years, we could maybe be making a lot of interest and the bond could still be low. So Mel and I discussed a few things. Bob Gero and the bond counsel with the bond bank and our bond attorney are just going to figure it out. I think the simplest solution would be we will create yet another bank account and just take the $75,000 that's approved or in the budget and just put that directly in that bank account. Because what can happen over the course of this is the IRS, because you're dealing with the IRS, could come and want an audit of that. And it'd be easier to audit one bank account than to say, oh, it's in the general fund and all this. They had suggested that maybe we could have it in the general fund and just be, we use this. But I pointed out that we've said all along that this is specifically dedicated to the garage, and there's no way of going about what we've been saying all along. So I think the simplest solution is just to create a bank account, take the $75,000 annual, which halfway through, it will actually be less than $75,000 every year anyway, and just put it in one account. That's the account, that's where the money is. If you want to inspect the interest, it'll be a lot cheaper for them to audit one account than go through all our books. So I'll let you know what the final decision on that is. We'll see.
Forty years ago, that was a very common thing, to borrow, to get a bond, put it in the bank.
Yeah.
Make money on, you know, make interest on the money.
Yeah, it's kind of funny because we signed all this non-arborage garage stuff to get the bond, but they still, you know, this apparently caught their attention that, oh, you know, you're going to have this money, then where are you going to have it? It's like, well, I mean, they have a point. Down the road, this could be flipped, you know? We could be making a lot of interest quickly. I doubt it, but we could, you know? But so we'll figure out whatever we have to do to make the IRS happy.
Meeting on...
Wednesday at 1:00.
Oh, it's at 1:00 now?
It's at 1:00, yes.
At the station?
At the station.
It was at 2:10, so maybe you already know.
Yeah, I reminded...
Yeah, I think I got that update. That's the Pennington Station restaurant?
Yeah.
Yeah. Remind me what we're meeting about?
This is Goldstone and the RFP, and we're meeting with Goldstone MSK. We'll sign the actual contract, but I think it's important for the chair and Art to be there because it's a lot of money.
Right. And they sent us a contract?
Yes.
And we only changed a tiny bit of it, right?
Yes, in that line there, and I just turned off my computer, but we added in... Can't read that.
Oh, yeah, so wait, let's see.
Scope of services per attachment and the attachments are made part of the contract.
So is this wording here is a little different, right? Or is this the final?
That's the original.
That's the original, right. And what I was looking for was where it said in here specifically... Everything in the contract looked like exactly what we wanted, except where it said in the RFP that they were going to help us evaluate bids that we got from an engineering point of view. And they apparently felt it was covered in this other provisions, scope of services per attachment, town of Shast Lake RFP, and the town attorney recommended that we change that wording a little bit.
Incorporated therein.
Can I say that again?
Incorporated therein. Scope of services per attachments incorporated therein.
So just legally to say, everything that we asked for in the RFP, they will do.
And the...
So the meeting on Wednesday is to discuss this contract, and then we'll bring it back here for approval after that?
I think the board should make a motion to amend the contract to include those words. I'll give them to you specifically in one minute. Because to do otherwise would cause delay, because that's the only thing that's been changed. I believe I sent that as part of the form.
So you want to go ahead and approve this contract tonight?
Give Tim the authority to sign it up?
Yeah, because everything's the same except the adding of two words on our attorney's advice to just make sure that we can hold... to just make sure that we can hold that the RFP and the proposal are incorporated within the contract.
Okay.
Taking, taking a little time here.
Let's see if I can find it.
Yeah, it, the, we, the renewed one should've been in the draft article.
Okay, Article seven, I think that means seventeen on vice counsel, we're changing the language to scope of services per attachment incorporated in full.
Yes.
The attachments are town RFP and Goldstone proposal. So, we're just changing s- scope of services per attachment to scope of services per attachments incorporated in full.
And that's the only change in the whole document?
I move, we accepted this, we accept this proposal with the change as so shown, and give Tim the authority to sign the contract.
All right, okay, we have, uh, a motion from Art to modify the contract received from Goldstone to say in Article seventeen, scope of services per attachment incorporated in full, and to authorize the chair to sign the contract. Is there a second? Seconded by Ken. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion is approved, five zero zero. Other business?
The only other business I would have is come on the board, I'll be going on vacation Friday, and we'll be back, uh, June, July tenth. As usual, I'm crazy and I travel with my laptop, so I'll be keeping up on it.
Okay, well, we hope you have fun.
We'll be fine.
Well, we guys.
Yes.
Yo, 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 yo muddle.
That's right. Okay, does anybody else have any other business?
Uh, I'm gonna, the executive session, uh, I guess maybe we should have a brief one.
Okay.
Although I don't, the topic really doesn't apply anymore.
Okay, it's up to you, you called it.
I, I would, I would pass on it, I don't know, I have anything to say on it now.
All right, we can skip executive session. Uh, reviewing action items, we're still carrying a couple from back in April related to water board. Uh, review of water department regulations by Jim McGuinness, and discussion between Jim and Dave about, uh, the water board's handling of the new assistant salary.
Yep, just a side on that, uh, Jim was originally gonna be here, we're gonna have a water board tonight. Uh, when we talked about that a couple of months ago, uh, Jim and his dates mixed up, and, uh, his granddaughter's graduating college, that's why we're not doing it now. We've already discussed and rectified all this stuff and have the water department budget all done, except for Jim's, uh, salary. So we will be bringing that up probably at July seventeenth, we'll have a water board, uh, to that. What, what the water board decides for Jim's salary will work out, uh, retroactively. But the, uh, overall budget is not changing at all for the water department. Yeah, so it's, it's all pretty much just the same.
And, uh, the assistant salaries part, that was, y'all talked about it?
Yeah, that's all leveled out.
Okay.
And it appears, uh, it's, it's just the same as a wash, you know, it's just changing titles and, and turns into nothing.
All right, um, we had a note to include the RFP in the minutes for five one, and that was in there tonight, so, uh, that's taken care of. We had a note about, uh, giving Dave, uh, approval to pursue the sidewalk scoping grant, and we discussed tonight, we're gonna put that on hold for a while. Uh, at our meeting on the fifth, we had given Dave a, a charge to look at, uh, signage for, uh, using Jake brakes in town and causing noise, and Dave looked into that, and the state said?
No. Um, it turns into a, a matter of safety. Jake brakes were a recognized safety device on heavy trucks, and we put signs up saying, don't use them when you're on a downhill into a village, is highly not recommended. You do see engine brakes in some towns, the signs are not approved and they're not, uh, recommended. Uh, they don't have to be followed by the truckers and they know that.
There's probably no enforcement to them.
You can't enforce them, yeah, the only thing that way you could enforce it is to have, uh, the state truck unit here with a decimal meter and see if they're exceeding it, and, uh, because that's what was suggested, that modern trucks really wouldn't, wouldn't be making this noise unless they, it was tampered with. But, again, having a guy sit here for hours on end waiting for a truck to come fill, I'm sure and I appreciate that in the middle of the night, if someone decides they're gonna use it, it's gonna resonate in some neighborhoods, sorry, Joe.
Those truck drivers love it, though, you know, it's gotta be fun.
Uh, yeah, I guess, but then the newer trucks, even if they're using it, they don't, they don't make that kind of noise.
They don't make the noise.
Yeah.
Yeah, other, other items from our, uh, June fifth meeting have been dealt with. The RFP got distributed, I signed the trustee's bank documents in front of the notary. Um, we edited the host town agreement and dealt with that tonight, and, uh, Dave did his homework on the purchasing policy, and we approved that tonight. Action items I caught this evening for us to look into, Dave's gonna look at the status of that sign replacement program we signed off on.
Put on White Creek Road, it's for the White Creek.
Yeah, it's for the White Creek Road, yeah, it was part of that.
Yeah. And then, uh, Dave's gonna look and see if Green Mountain Power will help us with some of our tree problems. Was there any others that anybody remembers?
I had a thought, Tim, uh, would it be worth, Dave, uh, you say you got twenty culverts to put in?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? Would it be worth considering maybe just putting out a bed? Is what anybody with local contractors would, they'd have put no depth for some of them.
Uh, there's a possibility of that, uh, I think we can work the schedule so that we can do it. Uh, we're going to have the decision on that in a couple of days. Uh, because some are very short, some are just segments, some are, are long and, and larger. But, um, it's possible to, to put in two a day, larger ones, one a day. Um, I think we can, we can do it in the schedule.
Look, I was just thinking that maybe it would help the town grow and might be able to say something about your budget. I mean, I don't know how it would work, but...
Uh, I think of all the things, the culverts would probably be the easiest thing for us to do because we have all the equipment, uh, the materials are minimal, uh, and we definitely have the equipment to do it, so we can do that. Where, where I was thinking, if we went for construction contracts, would be on one of the, uh, longer fabric projects, uh, in some combination, like, we would, when Perrin Road was done, we had basically a couple of equipment operators on the contract, and we were doing all the trucking and everything. But, like, in my vision of going out for a contract, we would have a contractor do one whole project.
Yeah.
Beginning to end. Meanwhile, we're doing an equivalent project, and, you know, we're moving forward. But I don't really see the point in putting out a contract to have someone run a grader and a bucket loader. When we got graders and bucket loaders, what I needed is dump trucks to feed them.
Yeah.
You know, and that's what we're doing on, on, as we looked at East Road and West Mountain and things. We need, it's easy to get drivers to bring loads to the site. It's usually like $85 an hour, but, you know, as long as the grader operators be in fed and can keep moving, you know, that's the key.
With no big blacktop contracts this year, maybe our person who usually does the blacktop, he wouldn't be interested in doing the job like that.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, you know, put it out there and see what's, uh, available, you know? Uh, like I said, the first thing, uh, I wanna clear is, is where we stand on, on trees. Uh, but, you know, we, we can play with all this, uh, and see where the schedule goes. But I, I agree, there's, there's certain areas, I know some people are having trouble getting contractors to do things. Other things, uh, the money hasn't come around here this year for the paving grants, so, uh, you know, there might be somebody out there who can do something for a reasonable price. You know, it's, it's pretty similar, pretty similar work.
Okay. Covers the action items, we decided we don't need executive session to discuss personnel. In that case, uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Art, seconded by Ken, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.